Commission meeting for May tenth will come to order, please. It's loud tonight.
It's amped up.
It really is.
(laughing).
City Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Abraham.
Present.
Commissioner Galt.
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Mayor Kayler.
Present. I think I'll back off a little. We don't have anyone to do the invocation tonight. Do I have any volunteers in the audience? Commissioner, would you mind doing that?
I will.
Thank you. And our Pledge of Allegiance, Commissioner Galt, if you'll do that.
Sure. Let us bow. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for today. We'd like to pray a special prayer for those, our neighbors down the road in Mayfield and Graves County, who went through some pretty terrible storms. We pray that their families are safe and that the, if their property damage is minimal. We thank you that there wasn't any loss of life thus far that I know of, but we ask that you, we lift up our prayers for those folks over in Mayfield and Graves County. These things we ask in His name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
City Manager, are there any additions or deletions?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We do have some presentations tonight, so I have the honor of having a dear friend here tonight. And this is, to whom it may concern, it's my pleasure to write this letter of introduction for Belon, since she is moving out of our community to be with her husband in Atlanta. Because of her many accomplishments in the community leadership in Paducah, Kentucky, and across our great state, Belon has added so much value and creativity to our community over the years. And during her time in Paducah, Belon has been a dedicated Associate Professor at the Paducah School of Art and Design. She has been devoted to passing on skills to the students who train there. And through her beautiful artwork and incredible story, she has inspired many Americans to never give up your dream. Also, she has been champion for women's rights through her paintings, lectures, and her book. We will miss her enthusiastic leadership and wish her well as she continues her journey in Georgia. And I have something else for you, Belon. So I'm pleased tonight to be able to present you with the Duchess of Paducah. Know ye that Belon Liao is named a Duchess of Paducah. I hereby confer this honor with all the rights, privileges, and responsibilities thereto appertaining, in testimony whereof I have caused these letters to be made patent and the seal of the city to be herein to affix, done at Paducah on the tenth day of May in the year of our Lord 2016. Gail Kayler, Mayor. Belon, I'm so glad I got to know you.
Thank you.
And as I said, you do have an incredible story.
Would you like to say something? Yeah, I would like to give the book to you.
Come up here. Okay.
And I would like to give my book.
Belon has a wonderful book that she's written, and you can purchase it on Amazon. Do a little advertising for her here.
I would like to give the book to you and the city and to thank for supporting my art, my gallery, and the community work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And it really tells her story, and she has, she has a very inspiring story to tell. And when you read this, you realize how lucky we are to be American citizens and to live in a free country. Would you like to say something? Would you like to introduce your husband, please?
Oh, okay. My husband is right now holding the camera. And he's a mental health professional, and he tries to serve, save people. And, you know, we are, we fell in love, and then we married. And we have the, you know, so we make my full-time artist, and also continue as the author and grandmother, my grandson in Atlanta. So, oh, I continue painting, and I also sometimes come back and I will continue to support the community, try my best I can. And I just missing here friends and the leadership and, you know, so a lot of people. Thank you so much. Thank you.
You do.
And Belon's book is Diary of a, of the Dragon's Daughter. And, excuse me, you know, in China, when she goes back home, she's a rock star. I want everybody to know that. She really is. So we're pleased that we got to know you, Belon. So we have the Paducah Symphony Orchestra Beer Fest fundraiser here. Daniel, you're up to tell us about this wonderful event that you've put together. Another great festival for downtown Paducah.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for allowing me time, a couple moments here to tell you about Paducah's newest festival, an event that I think we can all get behind, Pabruka Beer Fest. And what this is doing, obviously, the start of this, of course, we recognize that with two new breweries in town, that Paducah is ripe for a beer fest. And yes, it's being organized by the Paducah Symphony Orchestra, but we're making this event, we want it to be a signature Paducah event. And so I want to fill in some gaps, maybe, in information for the Commissioners and the Mayor, and on how this event is going to run and how it works. It is set for Saturday, June 18th, from noon to five. It's a five-hour tasting event. Folks can buy tickets in advance for $25, $30 on the day of the event, and they'll receive a commemorative tasting glass and a beer, a beer card, good for 10 samples. And then, of course, they can purchase additional beer cards on the day of the event. It will also, we have some presenting sponsors for it that we've, that have helped us with some underwriting for it. Of course, obviously, we're counting on lots of ticket sales for those who love beer. There are 19 confirmed breweries for this event, probably about half a dozen more than what we originally planned on, but, so it will be quite the fun event, for sure. There will be half a dozen or so food vendors on site for food purchases for those who are at the event. And WKMS is sponsoring the, what we're calling the WKMS Flood Stage. There are three bands lined up for the event to entertain folks while they're down there. So that, pretty much, is how the event works. It's, we've set up its own websites, it's pabruka.com, so that way it has its own unique presence. We'll be involving somewhere about 200 volunteers on the day of the event. Lots of fun, lots of work, but certainly well worth it, and it supports your Paducah Symphony Orchestra. Are there any questions about it I can answer for you? You'll notice in the score magazine, there's an article about it, that some of the details that I just told you about might differ from what's in there, because I give you the most up-to-date stuff, but, and then that one sheet is a mock-up of our poster that's for the event itself. Tickets are also being sold around town and, and also online, so.
So if they go online or go to the symphony and purchase them in advance, you can say five.
And there's more up-to-date information about the breweries and, and the food vendors and how to volunteer online. And so, again, the biggest thing with this is that we really want it to be an event that is, helps Paducah build its tourism and have folks come here to town that may or may not have come here otherwise, because as one of our sayings goes, nothing brings people better together than beer.
Yeah.
Which is sad, I wish it were music, because the symphony, but beer probably ranks up there, too, so.
We have music, too.
Yeah, music's up there.
And food.
Food, for sure. Any questions about it? And?
Yeah, thank you so much. I mean, it's great to have something going on in June.
Absolutely.
Another festival to add to the other lineups.
All right, thanks again.
Thank you.
I mean, the funds help us support our education programs and services of the symphony as we continue to grow. So thanks again for allowing me to, to give you some, a little detailed, up-to-date detailed information, and look forward to seeing all of you at the Beer Fest.
We'll be there.
Pabruka.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And next, we have the Paducah Chiefs Baseball Report on the exciting new things going on at Brook Stadium. Greg McKeel, if you'll come forward. You have a couple of your board members with you tonight.
Yes, Dr. Frank Heideg and Neil Carroll. These are a handout here. This has got a little information here about what we're, what we're doing and have been doing. So this will give you an idea.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Again, I'm Greg McKeel, and I'm with Brook Stadium Commission and the Paducah Chiefs Baseball Club. Want to tell you how much we appreciate you letting me be here tonight. If I get running too long, you can just stop me, tell me, because I get started, it's hard to stop. But Paducah's always been a Paducah, a baseball town. We've always prided ourselves on baseball. Got a lot of young men that have gone on to play minor league baseball and major league baseball. 1903, the Paducah Chiefs actually started in Paducah. At that time, they were named the Paducah Indians. They had a conflict somewhere down the road, and so they changed the name to the Chiefs. The Kitty League is what they played in at that time, and it, again, started in 1903. It went through the years, and what would happen with the league? They'd run three to five years, and then the league would fold. It'd be dead for a couple of years, and then it would come back. And when it came back, there would be different cities that were involved at that time, but Paducah was always in there, and Paducah was always the Chiefs from that point forward. This continued on until 1948. Polk Brooks, who was a businessman in the city of Paducah, came up with the idea of building a, a showplace for the city of Paducah, and that was Brook Stadium. They started construction in 1948. It was completed in 1949, and the Paducah Chiefs of the Kitty League at that time played in that stadium. And they played there until 1955. In 1955, the Kitty League folded for the last time. That was the end of it. Paducah was in first place at the time, and financially was doing very well. But when the league folds and there's nobody to play, then you're in, you got problems. So that was, like I say, that was 1955. After that time, Brook Stadium, Paducah Tillman Baseball Plays, played there at that time and still does. And there's been a lot of other operations that have come in and played baseball in Brook Stadium. American Legion's been there. Murray State UK has played there, which, by the way, they'll be playing again this next Tuesday, the 17th, so if you haven't got your tickets, need to be looking into that. It's gonna be a lot of fun. But anyway, it went on through the 70s and through the 80s, the stadium started to get into disrepair. In the 1990s, it was actually so far down by 1996 that it was scheduled for demolition. And at that point, I guess that was probably the low point at, for the city of Paducah and for Brook Stadium. At that point, Dr. Frank Heideg stepped forward and kind of, I guess, picked up the gauntlet there and decided that he was gonna try to do something to make sure that the stadium didn't get torn down. He went out and got the, got the state of Kentucky to bring their high school baseball championship series to Brook Stadium that year, which, how that happened, I've got no idea, but he told me that he promised to fill their buses up with gasoline if they got down here. He'd fill them up before they went home, and that, he said, that sealed the deal. So they came here, and, and with that, I mean, as small a thing as that was, it really got the community backing, involved with the resurrection of Brook Stadium. And from that point forward, there's not many times you won't go over there that you won't see Doc with, with some help from some inmates over there doing work on the field and keeping it maintained. I don't think anybody realizes how much work that's done over there by him that's free gratis, that he's not getting paid for, but he's doing it because he loves, loves the stadium, and that's what he does. And to think about what that stadium would look like right now if it hadn't been for him, again, it probably wouldn't be there. Over those years, since that time, we've had the Ohio Valley College Baseball Tournament's been there, was there for nine years, which helped us, I guess, kind of jumpstart our college connections. We've had NAI regional tournaments over there. We've had, again, we've had Mid, Mid-Continent played over there, some of the games. We've had SIU Carbondale. We've got Murray State UK, as I said, every other year comes in there and plays a game, which is really exciting thing for the people of Paducah. As things have gone on, and the Brook Stadium Commission was formed back in the early 2000s, one of the things we were charged with was to try to bring the, the best minor league amateur baseball that we could to Brook Stadium in the city of Paducah. And that's one of the things that Brook Stadium Commission spends a lot of time and a lot of effort researching what's going on and who's doing what, and trying to keep our finger on the pulse of baseball in its part of the country. One of the things that's really been phenomenal in the United States, especially in the, the middle, Midwest, is that summer college baseball leagues have developed all over. And what happens is, these college players play for their teams in the spring, and then in the summer, they're assigned to baseball teams around the country that they go and play for the summer before they go back to college, and that's what this is. So we've got, we've got, all these young men are on college rosters at different levels. They, they get a chance to come here and hone their skills, and then hopefully, and improves them so that when they go back, they're better players. So that's one of the things that when we looked at where we were with the, with the city of Paducah and Brook Stadium, we felt like we needed something in Paducah that was going to, I guess, jumpstart us and get us back on the track where we wanted to be, which was in an upward spiral. And, and what we did is, when we went to the Ohio Valley League and talked to them about a franchise, and decided that that was gonna be the best fit for Paducah, we, we really felt like that we could do this, but we knew we needed the, the support of the community. And it's just phenomenal, the, the support that we've had from the city of Paducah, McCracken County, the Tourism Commission, Paducah Bank. We've had just Royal Oaks, I could just go on and on, because there's so many people that have stepped up and come forward and, and thought this was a great thing, because we're gonna have a team for the city of Paducah. There's no other team in Paducah. I mean, we don't have one. We've got high school teams, which is cool. I mean, everybody's got their own high school, and that's good, and then we got universities that play different places, and we can support them, but this is something that's gonna be ours. It's gonna belong to Paducah, and it's gonna be the Paducah Chiefs, and everybody can get excited about it, and hopefully, there won't be a lot of controversy about it. You know, we're not throwing rock in the river. We're not, we're not.
Don't go there, girl.
We're not putting up tents, all this, I'm just saying. We, we, okay. I'm sorry. Okay, but, but I'm just saying, this, this is something that, that, that I think everybody can get excited about, and I've got people that come up to me all the time that say, hey, and this is a quote from one of the Commissioners over here, hey, I'm not a baseball person, I'm not an athletics or sports person, but I think this is pretty cool, and I can't wait for it to start. We've already sold almost 200 season tickets for the first season. We've got corporate sponsors for, out of the 23 nights that we've got games, we've got corporate sponsors for 18 of those nights already. So it's been just, I guess, phenomenal response from this community to come out and to support something that we're putting together here. Now, most of these teams are all the teams in this league, except us, are owned by somebody. In other words, somebody's in a situation to make money. This is all volunteer labor. We've got nobody making any money off this. Now, the guy that's running the concession stand will probably make some money off this, but any money that we make is, is Paducah Baseball Club or Brook Stadium Commission, all goes right back into the stadium and the team. There's no salaries being drawn here, and, and so this is, this is for the community. And again, I just want you to, to let you know how much we appreciate and how much we thank you for stepping up and backing us in this endeavor, and I think we're gonna show you that it's gonna be well worth it when June 4th comes around and we have our first home game.
Greg, I know the, the Brook Stadium Board is a real working board. Could you just name off the board members for us?
We've got Richard Abraham, Dr. Frank Heideg, Neil Carroll. We've got Lenore Goode, we've got Jay Smith, we've got Howard Finley, we've got Chip Cox. Missed somebody?
Bill Pingston.
Bill Pingston, those lawyers, they always get one. Is that it? Anybody?
Jay Smith, did you say him?
I said Jay Smith, yes. Yeah. Anyway, that, that's our board.
Good board.
Well, it's, it's been really good, and they've done a lot of hard work, and it's taken a lot of hard work to, we didn't realize how big a project this was when we started. And, anyway, so, yeah, it's, but it's been a, it's been a, you know, an effort of love, and everybody that's involved is doing this because they love baseball, they love Brook Stadium, and they think it's gonna be great for the city of Paducah.
So I guess you all can tell that Greg's pretty enthusiastic about the stadium. And because you are so enthusiastic, I'm going to make you a Duke tonight.
Well, great.
You know, the, the city of Paducah is better because of people like Greg and like the board at Brook Stadium and all the other boards that we have around town that do so many things that, as you say, you don't get paid for that, you do it because you love it.
Right.
So tonight, I'm proud to present you with a Duke of Paducah. And Doc Heideg, would you come up? I don't, in all the years that Doc has worked with Brook Stadium, he's never received a Duke.
Wow.
Yeah, really. And people say I'm doing this because, and it's an election year. Not true. Not true. So, Doc, I'm, I'm gonna have to get yours to you. Okay? But to all whom these persons come, greetings. Know ye that Greg McKeel and Doc Heideg is named a Duke of Paducah. I hereby confer this honor with all the rights, privileges, and responsibilities thereto appertaining, in testimony whereof I have caused these letters to be made patent and the seal of the city to be herein to affix, done at Paducah, the 10th day of May, in the year of our Lord 2016. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doc. And I'll go.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ma'am, let me just say, I, I was out there on Saturday when the miners played the Evans Real Otters, and I always like to go down and, and talk to the, talk to the players. And they love to come to Brook Stadium and play. One, one kid said that it's, it's like, it's like going back in time a little bit, the nostalgic of the stadium. Doc and the guys do a great job of maintaining. I talked to some of the Tillman Baseball guys, and even looks like it's gonna start right now, they're out there pulling the top, the tar, the tarps down. So it's easy to get behind effort like that.
It is.
And everybody that comes, and I'm not, I'm not a baseball fan, and never, never was, but when you go to the ballpark, you just get sucked in.
You're a fan, then.
You do. You do. I mean, from every strike to the heat coming from the mound, all of it, you know? So I applaud y'all's efforts, man.
Okay. We'll go on into our meeting now. Commissioner Abraham, you have the minutes?
I do. I move that the reading of the minutes for the April 26, 2016 City Commission meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the City Clerk be approved as written.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. We'll go into our motions. Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that the following documents be received and filed. Documents, Notice of Cancellation for the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah, Kentucky for May 3, 2016. Certificates of Liability Insurance, Premier Fire Protection, Inc., Vanguard Contractors, LLC, Municipal Equipment, Inc. Quick Claim deed for Christ Temple Apostolic Church for 1018 North 14th Street, tract 1 and 2. Contracts and Agreements, Memorandum of Agreement with the Department for Local Government, Office of Federal Grants for a Walking Trail in the Health Park, Contract for Services with Greater Paducah Sustainability Project, Inc., Contract Modification for Memorandum of Agreement with the Kentucky Department of Fish and Wildlife Resources to Extend Time and Balance of the Grant for Construction of a Transient Bone Dock. City of Paducah Department of Finance Financial Report for Period Ending February 29, 2016. Paducah Water Works Financial Highlights for March 2016. Paducah McCracken County Convention and Visitors Bureau Financial Situations for Period Ended June 30, 2015.
Second.
Okay. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes, you have the Personnel Actions.
Yes, ma'am. Upon the recommendation, the City Manager of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah ordered that the personal changes on the attached list be approved.
Second. Hi, Steve.
Evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
So I can see we're ramping up for summer?
We're still, still hiring for summer, yes.
What, what are we still hiring?
I, I think we still have pool attendant open, and I think rec leaders are still open. We have a lot of applications in on those. Not all of the people that we act to hire, a week later, they got something better, or went to grandma's for the summer or something. So, so we get a little bit of that turnover that starts before they, they even start, but, but the programs will be ramping up here, you know, generally as soon as school lets out.
Okay. Any questions? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, you have the next one.
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary to obtain a 2016 matching insurance services safety grant award in the amount of $1,950 from the Kentucky League of Cities, asymmetric testing fees, and reimbursement for individuals to attend the Kentucky League of Cities Safety Conference be adopted.
Second. One of the little services we, we get from being league participants in their insurance program is a modest safety grant. What we're proposing to use this year's funds for is to fundamentally change the way we do pre-employment testing at a, with a local company, Atlas Physical, and there's some additional costs associated with that. We, we spoke to KLC about that, and even though this wasn't one of their defined categories, they told us they would let us, they would allow the city of Paducah to, to apply outside of the guidelines, and we feel strongly we'll get it, and we feel strongly it'll be an ongoing thing they will continue to allow us to do and, and pay for some of our costs for pre-employment testing.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Commissioner Abraham, you're the next one.
I do. I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the city of Paducah Planning Department to apply for a 2016 U.S. Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant in an amount not to exceed $7,030 through the U.S. Department of Justice for use by the Paducah Police Department be adopted.
Second.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Hello.
This is, fortunately for us, an annual grant that we receive. I think it was for about $15,000 or so last year, $7,000. This upcoming year will be, we will contribute to, for the Court Awards Fund to help with a match, purchasing 19 vests total, I believe.
We do this all the time, don't we?
Fortunately.
Because they wear out.
They do.
Any questions? Okay. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. We have one under our ordinances for adoption. Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with the Paducah McCracken County Convention and Visitors Bureau. Convention and Visitors Bureau for specific services. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The mayor here authorizes to execute a contract with the Paducah McCracken County Convention and Visitors Bureau in the amount of $25,000 to be used for marketing and promoting events and venues related to the 2016 American Quilter Society Show. This contract shall expire June 30, 2016.
Need a second.
Second?
Okay. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye.
We have some ordinances for introduction, so we don't vote on these tonight. Commissioner Rhodes?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled... An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky Governor's Office for Local Development for a 2014 Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant. This ordinance is summarized as follows. Authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with Kentucky Governor's Office for Local Development to obtain a matching grant in the amount of $75,000 for a National Park Service Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant for the construction of Phase 1 of the Health Park located at 421 North 13th Street. The city will provide 50% in-kind cash match.
Second?
With this grant agreement happening, it allows us now to go out to bid on Phase 1 of the project. We're hoping that the bid documents will be done by the end of May, and we'll actually bid out the project 1st of June. So this is good news. We've been waiting for environmental clearance on this grant for some time.
And in case people don't know, what is Phase 1?
Phase 1 includes drainage and grading of the entire site. It includes the playfield, includes irrigation, includes the walkway path around the entire park, includes the workout area, and I think also includes the new garden area, and maybe the pervious pavers for the market area.
So that's quite a bit.
Yes, a lot. So hopefully...
Have a huge impact.
In June.
Steve, you're not a Rotary Club member, but you want to put a plug in for the Rotary Club sign up to build the play park?
Yes, I don't have those dates with me.
20th of June.
Through the 25th.
Monday through the next, actually, Sunday.
Right. And they can go online and sign up for three different shifts. I believe it's from 8 to 12.
Right.
12 to 5:30.
5:30 is like 8.
And on that Sunday at 6:00 PM is the...
Dedication.
Dedication of the park, and that is for the playground that's being built before Phase 1, before the city actually comes into construction. I guess that would be in the northwest corner of the actual park.
And let's see, Rotary, there are 900, believe it or not, slots that can be filled up, so if you want to sign up for more than one, we're encouraged to do so.
And all organizations within the community, whether churches...
You don't have to be a carpenter, a plumber, or electrician. I mean, any skill level be appreciated and put to use, so.
It's gonna be a fun week.
Great week.
Commissioner, if you sign up... Commissioner Rhodes, if you sign up for like a time slot, do you do that same time slot every day, or is it...
Right, and if you want, you can.
Okay.
You can sign up, there's on the sign up sheet on the internet, just sign up for what you want, when you want it. And in fact, I think you'll be able to see who has signed up at those time slots, if there's somebody you want to work with or maybe don't want to work with.
Yes.
Do that.
That's correct. You can see who else has signed up.
You can see who else is signing up. Like, yeah. But it's a good project, and it should be a lot of fun. And I think they'll find a skill level to fit any person's ability.
And the weather's gonna be perfect that week.
And I know Lindsey... Lindsey sent out an email for a city team to do one of the slots. I don't know if we've heard back yet.
I think...
Anyone?
I'm not sure if there's an actual city team, but I know there's a lot of city involvement from various departments that are actually gonna be signing up to help throughout the week.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled... An ordinance of the city of Paducah, Kentucky, approving a First Amendment to Hotel Development Agreement between the city of Paducah, Kentucky and Paducah Riverfront Hotel LP with respect to a public project, authorizing the execution of the amendment. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The ordinance authorizes the city of Paducah to execute a First Amendment to the Hotel Development Agreement between the city and Paducah Riverfront Hotel LP, eliminating Paducah Riverfront Hotel LP's commitment to operate and manage the publicly-owned Convention Center, generally known as the Julian Carroll Convention, William &amp; Meredith Schrader Expo Center.
City Clerk? And we don't vote on these. Any discussion on this? It's pretty clear cut.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled... An ordinance authorizing and approving the sale of surplus municipal-owned real property and improvements located at 619 North 6th Street, Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky, for purposes of promoting tourism and economic development. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the city of Paducah to execute a special warranty deed and bill of sale to convey the real property and improvements located at 619 North 6th Street to the Paducah McCracken County Convention Center Corporation for purposes of promoting tourism and economic development.
This is a final step, I think, in the process that led up to both the relocation of the pavilion, the funding of that through the transient room tax, and the eventual ownership of the land and the pavilion by the Convention Center Corporation, so that it, among other things, becomes a recognized asset of the Convention Center Corporation. And that the financing of the land acquisition and the construction of the base qualified for funding under the transient room tax. So this is kind of a wrap on that project that I think, from all accounts, has been a very productive pathway to replacing the space that was lost with the construction of the new hotel.
City Managers' Report?
Well, yeah, well...
Okay. Last week, the city manager, Steve, and I had a conference call with Ratio and asked them to break the city hall plan down into Phase 1 and Phase 2, to give us something to look at and something to ponder on where we will move here in the future. So they did come up with some recommendations for Phase 1, and I think that's what the city manager wants to talk about tonight.
Well, on Phase 1, that would essentially address the critical issues with the building, that being the overhang and the lack of structural soundness there, as well as the roof, the condition of the roof, and the need to repair it. So between the two, repairing, replacing the roof actually, and stabilizing the overhang structure becomes the thrust of first phase. At this point in time, we've not asked Ratio to do any work beyond that or to do anything with a second phase, other than essentially identify that any components of the renovation schematic that we would want to do would then fall into a second stage. So obviously, that would not commit the city to a second stage or a second stage without a third stage or any other stages, nor would it commit to any kind of a timeline for a second stage. We just, at this point in time, are focused on what it would take to address essentially the safety issues and the critical issue with the roof that is contributing to some deterioration inside of the building. So a preliminary figure for that work is approximately $3.4 million. So before we would proceed any further with Ratio, I'd like to work with the finance office and take a look at options that the city might have to fund such a project. And then at some point down the road, not too far, we can come back to you and discuss if and how you might want to proceed with that. In the meantime, the Ratio work is at a standstill and would not proceed any further without our direction.
Any questions?
Go ahead.
After you.
What do you think the length of time would be?
Particular to...
Getting something back, I guess.
Well, we were busy wrapping up the budget process. And I think that as a practical matter, if we're looking even at that amount of money out of debt financing, it would not impact next year's budget. It would be the following year at the earliest, so I don't know that there's a great need to solve that issue before we would adopt next year's budget, because it would impact the following year's budget. So hopefully, within the next three to four weeks, within a couple of weeks after we present the budget in two weeks and have a chance to catch our breath from that.
What to do with City Hall? On the evening that we had the public comment view, both options, and the comment cards were filled out, and it was pretty close when you look at existing rehabilitation. I think it was 3.65, new construction 3.40. And so I'm not suggesting by any means that we spend the amount of money that we were looking at the other night, 20, 21 million dollars. That's a lot of money. But I must say that when you look at this building and the shape that it's in, if we repair the depleting canopy, I guess that satisfies that issue. But the building as a whole, I don't think it does a whole lot for it. Couple of weeks ago, we had an earthquake, and I think it was 3.5. This building was built in the 60s, where seismic issues wasn't in the construction of buildings. So I was a little concerned. If we fix the canopies, that doesn't do anything to structurally, from the ground up, solidify the building seismic-wise. So whatever we decide to do, I think we need to keep in mind that that will continue to be an issue with us living right in the middle of the magic bolt. That earthquake that happened, we didn't all get emails letting us know that it was gonna happen on that morning. So, I mean, it is what it is, and this is where we live. So that's something to keep in mind moving forward. Again, spending $20 million, I don't think so. But at some point, that's gotta be addressed. That's gotta be addressed. So of the 70, 69 to 70 folks that came and looked at both rendering, it was about split, 50s, 50s. So what I'm saying is not something that obviously hadn't been talked about. So just wanted to make that comment.
Well, I think the key in any start to this would be to... And I think this is the value of going as far as we did go. We see the whole picture. So we have the ability to look ahead with what we do now and make a determination, are we doing anything here that gets in the way of something down the road or replicates it or would cause us to have to do something over or redo it? I think that's important, and we have the ability to do that with the information that's been developed by Ratio to date. So I want to say that with respect to the two things we mentioned tonight, my understanding is, and we'll double check on this before we come back, is that neither one would negatively impact the city's ability to proceed with a next step in the process, and that next step could possibly be some additional structural stabilization of the rest of the building. We'll double check on that to make sure, because I don't think we would want to paint ourselves in a corner there. Make sure that the options remain wide open, and we don't do something that would result in a cost escalation to move forward with some of the aspects of the building in the
Any comments? Commissioners' comments?
That was mine.
Okay.
We just said it earlier.
Anything good happen to anyone today? I'm sure there was.
Well, okay, well, not today, but my youngest daughter was home for about four days, and it was great having her in the house, hearing the guitar coming from her room. That was pretty cool. And she's off to Sandusky, Ohio. She will be performing the Motown Review at Cedar Point all summer. Like, you get a gig like that, and just pick a song. I mean, that's... So she's pretty excited about that. And then she's moving to New York City in January to live. Okay.
Very good.
Yeah. So, anyway, that's all I have.
You'll be all right.
You'll be all right, Dad. You'll be all right.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Jeff has a couple more things here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nothing major significance here. There should be a contract let for the demolition of the former nursing home by the end of the week, so we'll see that structure go away. We're expecting, have been expecting, rock to arrive at the Riverfront Project that was referred to earlier... By barge this week, so hopefully, you'll see that, hopefully, tomorrow or the next day. Everybody's aware, of course, of the Loctown Arts Festival starting this weekend. And Steve, what you said about the weather is gonna apply to that, too, I'm sure. I know they've had kind of bad luck with the weather in recent years. Our budget presentation is going to be two weeks from tonight, and logistics didn't really work out to do the budget presentation, other than during our scheduled 5:30 meeting that night. So hopefully, the business agenda will be short, so you can devote your full time and attention to the budget presentation that night. So more information on that to follow, but as that stands right now, the date will be two weeks from tonight, beginning at 5:30. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Okay.